So I'm going to call to order this National Board of Education meeting. I'm going to call to order this National Board of Education meeting. It is 6:18. HR went a little bit over, which is why we're starting a bit late. But I would like to start off by doing roll call. And Ms. Raymond is at home, under the weather, along with some of her family members. So are we all in consensus with her being on the phone?
Yes.
I see nodding and yeses. Okay, so Ms. Gilio is stepping into her role as clerk tonight, and I will have her do the roll call first. All votes will have to be by roll call tonight.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Here, here. Okay. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
And I am here. And Ms. Raymond?
I'm here. I'm at home because we have COVID.
Ms. Lamphier?
Going to share your medical issues.
Ms. Lamphier, here. Ms. Brown, here. Ms. Zeeem?
I will be praying for your family, Heather. I'm here.
Ms. Johnson? Present with allergies. Oh, dear. And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Great.
Okay, so the next piece, and Ms. Gilio, you get to do this, is to read the prayer. In the book, there's a tab.
See it? Okay. Okay. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutes of our institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Ms. Brown, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Do we have a second?
Wait a minute. I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. And we have to do roll call, so on.
Oh.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, there's a couple of things that why I won't vote for the consent agenda here. First of all, I was looking for the curriculum committee audio, and I could not find that at all. And I've been searching for that because I came in late last Monday. I thought it was at six usual time, and I showed up versus 4:30. And I did read, because you said a lot of times it's our responsibility to know what's going on. And I did read some of the summary minutes. But I really have a problem tonight that, before we vote on this, I'd like to know if approving this consent agenda includes approving the minutes from the ad hoc committee meeting last Thursday, June 23rd, or the meeting held on May 27th? Because there's no minutes from either one of them.
For last week's ad hoc meeting, there's no minutes?
There's no minutes. As of this point, so how can we approve anything for that?
Hmm, double check. I know the subcommittee was through the JSSBC, so that's not under our purview. But the ad hoc committee last week, let me double check that.
Well, I understand that the JSSBC isn't, but there still isn't any meeting minutes, and we had members from our board attend that.
Mm-hmm.
And usually, the JSSBC minutes come over to here when there's a meeting. So there's usually minutes, and it has been more than five days. So the city really is in violation of, no, no, on the May 27th.
I thought you were talking about Thursday night's JSS.
Yep, and it has to be done within five days. So I probably will have to file a suit in court to get those minutes. It's a sad thing when you have to do that.
It has only been four days since the 23rd meeting, so technically.
But how do we vote on that?
Technically, it's not in there, but you're right.
So.
Can't.
I just want to say, I spoke today with Central Office about the 23rd minutes, and they were not done as of this afternoon. So I'm not surprised that they're not up yet. But they do have them, to pick them up. So it's just one of the two ladies who does it is out.
Okay.
So can we postpone this until the minutes come to us? I wouldn't think you'd vote on something that you didn't have.
Right, no, that's correct. We can move to amend it and not approve the ad hoc naming committee meetings, but all of the other ones? Would that be okay? So I'm looking for, well, we seconded that, so does, do you want to table your motion?
Or amend it?
Well, you can table it, and then I can just read it again, and then we don't have to vote.
Whose motion was it? It wasn't mine?
I see. I see Ms. Brown had a hand up before we make any motions.
Yep. It was Ms., you have Ms. Zeeem, right?
Yep, Ms. Zeeem and Ms. Lamphier.
So this does not include any minutes from the May 27th meeting? Just to be clear, I mean, it's not on the list, but how will we be addressing the minutes of that meeting that are still not listed online that we had a quorum of our board attend?
I'll have to check with probably City Hall's minutes people.
So is it accurate that you presided over the meeting, and Ms. Raymond took the notes for the meeting?
I took the notes.
You took the notes?
I have them written up in a Word document.
And so they're still not posted?
And they were submitted, and I don't know why they haven't been posted yet.
And did you take any votes of a quorum of a committee from this board?
For the subcommittee, yeah, which.
So you took a vote of a quorum of this board on that night?
Well, for the subcommittee, yeah.
So you did take a quorum vote at the May 27th meeting? I think, all right. I think it's really important that those minutes be updated as soon as possible because we are now in clear violation of the right to know law on 91A. So, and we need to be really careful that any votes we take pertaining to that information could be undone by, if some of the right person petitions.
Yep.
The action of that committee.
Yep. So in that, I mean, just to clarify, that was a subcommittee of the JSSBC. Ms. Darling was there, Ms. Raymond was there, I was there. You were unable to come, you had a prior commitment, and Ms. Johnson.
I was the one who did.
Yep, I think there was a miscommunication between alternates. But the three of us who were there did vote in favor of passing on the name McCarthy Middle School to the JSSBC to make a recommendation to our board that they're in support of the McCarthy name. So that's what happened at that meeting. The minutes are not up, but those were how the votes went, but they have no bearing over what the Board of Education does.
So just, I just want to say, if that, that vote should not be qualified because that is technically a legal meeting, because it was a quorum of our committee that made the vote.
Right. And I had stated that I didn't feel that it was properly noted for the Board of Education. I know that it was properly noted for the joint special and for City Hall meetings. I did not feel that it fell under an appropriate notification for the Board of Education. So I did not feel that the vote that happened there had any bearing on the weight of what the Board of Education would do. So the minutes are not up, but I would not weigh that meeting the way that it was initially presented. Okay, Johnson?
Yes, my question is, why didn't you check with legal prior to that meeting? Because I'm still going over what was said by one of our board members on somebody that said, "I'm here to ensure that this happens." And you know what? It shouldn't have come out this way. There should have been no reason why we should be sitting here haggling about anything because of one meeting that, in order to get the minutes, which you took the minutes, that should have been up, that, am I going to have to go to court under the right to know law to get these minutes?
I mean, you can if you want to, but.
But I shouldn't have to. Nobody in this city should have to. This is why nobody likes us or any boards, because of transparency. We should not be sitting here arguing about, this should have just come to the board by that committee saying, "We would just like to make a recommendation to your ad hoc committee." And then we could have discussed everything in the ad hoc committee by everything that came from everybody in the city. This makes us look bad, really bad. And this is why I keep asking, where are these minutes? Because we all have, not only us, but the public have the right to know. That's why it's called the right to know law.
Can I have a point of order here?
Yep.
We're talk, we're talking about a meeting that was a subcommittee out of the city for which minutes were submitted to the city.
No, we're not talking about.
And the city hasn't posted it, right? So then, we've had two other ad hoc meetings of the Board of Education, which is appropriate with Board of Education members. But the last one from Thursday, those minutes aren't up yet because we haven't hit the trigger timeline for when they have to get.
That's what I.
So we have a motion on the table, on the table, on the floor right now, to approve the consent agenda, but really, we need to withdraw that motion, make a motion to take the missing ad hoc minutes out of the consent agenda, and then approve those when we get them at the next meeting, right?
That's what I was asking.
To get it back on track.
That's what I was asking. Ms. Zeeem wanted to withdraw her motion, then we can start over with the updated consent agenda.
Okay.
Ms. Zeeem, do you want?
Because we need a motion to take the ad hoc minutes out.
Whatever expedites this, I'm happy to do.
Are you okay withdrawing your second for that motion?
I am, but I wanted to point out that the ad hoc naming committee meetings minutes in the consent agenda are for June 7th. Those are posted. It's the June 28th, 24th ones that are.
The one that just happened, the 23rd minutes, are not yet posted.
But they're.
But it's within the timeframe.
But they're not on the consent agenda.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so, boy, we start quibbling about things, and we're all just wrong about everything. So the ad hoc naming committee meetings that are in here are for the June 7th meeting, not the June 23rd meeting that just happened.
Right.
So I, so I want to make a motion that we approve the motion with the exception of that meeting on the June 23rd.
That's not even, that's not even on the agenda.
Okay.
The June 23rd meeting.
So then.
What was that? Okay, so.
That was Jim.
I get a motion?
Cut that out.
Yep. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our agenda.
Would you repeat that again, please?
It's, it's just the same thing. People were saying that minutes weren't there, but we're referencing the wrong date.
Okay.
So the consent agenda on here is correct. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Heather.
From Heather.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. So on the motion to accept the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Oh, you have to do a aye.
Oh, no, wait, you roll call, sorry.
Yes, roll call.
Ms. Gilio?
Sure.
Get your ding in the sun while it's talking.
I'm so happy. Okay. Okay, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Okay. I vote yes. Ms. Raymond? Yes?
Heather?
Ms. Raymond? Heather?
We've lost her.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
No.
No, okay. Ms. Zeeem?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
No. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Yes. So we have two noes and seven yeses, so the motion carries.
Motion passes, yes. Do we have any items to remove from the consent agenda or communications outside of the consent agenda? No? Okay. So I wanted to acknowledge that Ms. Zeeem, this is her last meeting with us. She's formally resigned as of June 30th, so everybody get in all of your emails as soon as you possibly can. But I was hoping that Attorney Bolton could speak to us about what the process is and how we, we can't replace you, but how we fill your seat. If anybody, if there are no objections, I would like Attorney Bolton to join us for just a couple of minutes to tell us all and the public what the process is, because I know things changed after, was it two elections ago, the city ordinance changed?
There was a change to the city charter a few years ago.
Is your microphone on?
The green light is on.
Thank you. It's just habit at this point. It sounds super condescending, I apologize.
The, so, in any event, what the charter provides, and you don't have any policy that deviates from this or makes any further, gives you any further roadmap on how to do it. What the charter provides is that at the next regular meeting, or at a special meeting called for this purpose, within 60 days, the remaining members of the Board of Education elect someone to serve until the next municipal election. You can pick someone, you can advertise, you can solicit interest, ask people to send letters, resumes, what have you, but it's up to the remaining members of the Board of Education.
Okay. And we can, we can present whatever, like, if, if everybody has an individual person, they can present them, or more than one. There's nothing prohibiting anybody on the board from nominating whoever they would like, and then we vote on it.
That's correct. You, you need to come to a majority of the remaining members on a single individual. So someone can't win three to two or something. You'll have eight members left, a majority will be five, so hopefully, you get five votes. Now, if people aren't present, I suppose someone could win three to two, but.
Is it a simple majority or a two-thirds majority?
Simple majority.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Bolton? Ms. Brown?
So, since it's the next municipal election, is it this November's election, or is it the remainder of Ms. Zeeem's term?
The next municipal election would be in November of '23.
Oh, so it's not added, it's not added as an item on this particular, the next upcoming election, wouldn't be added as a special? It's the, it's the one in 2000, so it's the remainder of her term?
Well, if, if her term would end in January of 2024, then it will be until that election, and then it discusses how you fill the, the seat depending on who gets the most votes in the election. Someone who's not already a member of the board, who gets the most votes, fills the term from the date the votes are certified until the inauguration. Otherwise, the, the person selected by the board continues until the inauguration.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Zeeem, thank you so much for taking a minute out of your day to come and educate us and the public about what happens in our, in our sadness. Ms. Zeeem?
Yes, thank you for coming. And I just wanted to say to the public in TV land that it was an honor to serve you. I pray that I served you well, and I wish you all, and especially to our teachers, to the people who work in our district, I can't thank you enough. We're losing Mrs. Carey, a great loss. She was a wonderful asset, did a great job for the city, so many employees like that. I send you all my best wishes, and thank you for the, for the honor of serving your children.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Bolton, unless you have anything else you want to say to us.
I can leave whenever you want.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't want to keep you later than, than we need to.
I like company.
Okay, good. We like company. So this brings us up to the first public question comment period of the evening. It does look like we have a bigger turnout than we're used to in the last couple of weeks. So I will be calling names as they're presented on the first public comment sheet. I will remind you that, what?
Do I have to write down which names into the record?
No, it goes on this. And I, yep, sorry. So everybody keep it to less, to three minutes or less. Please refrain from being vulgar or, I mean, just rude in general. I don't feel like I need to tell you guys this, but trying to keep things consistent. So the first person up, and I'll just have you sit in the blue chair next to Ms. Darling, because we don't have the podium right now, if that's okay? The first person up, I have Kimberly McCarthy. And I will, I'll put the timer on, I'll put the timer on, and I will give you a little signal when you're about 30 seconds away from the end, and then a big signal when, well, you'll hear it, hopefully.
I'll do my best to be expedient. Kimberly, Kim McCarthy, 65 Musket Drive in Nashua. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to name the new middle school for my dad, late alderman at large, Brian S. McCarthy. It has been three and a half years since my dad's passing, and in that time, I've learned many people had assumed and felt the same way I had, that this school would be and should be named for him in his memory. To us and many others, this had seemed like such an obvious choice, and I didn't even think this would become a controversial issue. I want to share with you who my dad was, in the words of others who wrote tributes for him, that he exemplified the best kind of citizen advocate, the strongest leader in our city. Nashua has lost our most beloved champion, a force of good for the city, and a great leader, an inspiring public servant, and an overall model citizen. My dad exemplified what it means to be a leader. In 2019, he posthonestly received the Max Silber Community Leader Award from the Nashua United Way in recognition of his 25 years of contributions. It is said that the most dangerous phrase in language is, "We've always done it this way," and it'd be a shame not to name the school in memory of my dad simply because it's what we've always done. It should be a testament to the magnitude of his contributions. To name the school for him reflects the character and kind of person students and future community leaders should aspire to be. This isn't just some project I've decided to tie my dad's name to. It should be seen as so much more than just a building because of the school. It's the center of knowledge and development for the future of the community, and as a middle school especially, many will start to find their passions in new subjects and think about their future careers. This new school is located a little more than a mile from the home where my dad and my mom spent 38 years together. It connects to the conservation land that my dad helped establish in South Nashua and throughout the city. It's been on the land, or it's on the land my dad helped the acquisition of over 20 years ago. And the neighborhood is what it is today because my dad negotiated it down from, to 350 homes from the original plan of 3,000 condos. Around 11:25 PM on November 4th, 2018, the last photo of my dad was taken by the Patriots. He had a huge smile across his face, and I can hear his laughter when I see that photo. And less than 20 minutes later, after we got to the car, my dad suddenly lost consciousness and went into cardiac arrest. And I don't like to talk about that night. But I can't talk about my dad's passion for the community without sharing that literally the last thing he ever spoke about was the city of Nashua and his vision for its future. My dad loved the city like no one else. He'd been looking forward to this project and several others for some time, and was so excited to see them started. And I never imagined that he wouldn't be here to see his vision take shape. I'm here to advocate for my dad's name because I know it's the right thing to do. It's what he would have done for anyone else, and I wish I had had the time to get in all the things, all the things that make him so deserving of this. My dad's work, his impact, his presence is all around and affects every citizen, and will do so for generations to come. He will be remembered as a dedicated, caring public servant, for his work in supporting education as an alderman, for his personal contributions to technology and education, and for exemplifying what it means to be a community leader. I can think of no better tribute to my dad's legacy than to name the new middle school in his memory. So I strongly urge you to name the school for my dad, Brian S. McCarthy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you couldn't hear my dinger, so I'll have to come up with a better way to do that. Next up is Gloria McCarthy.
I'm here to speak to you about the naming of the new middle school in memory of my late husband, former alderman Brian S. McCarthy. Brian was an insightful, intelligent man and a problem solver. Education was paramount to Brian. He was a lifelong learner, always encouraged our children to never stop asking questions and to understand how things work and how to keep exploring. Many of you knew Brian and his passion for and dedication to the city of Nashua. The public Brian McCarthy was a husband of 43 years, a father of twins, a software engineer, a dedicated public servant, a staunch advocate of education, a lifelong learner. He was learning, he was auditing an MIT course in theoretical physics just before he passed away, a volunteer with AMSAT, which is the Radio Amateur Satellite Corporation, Nashua Area Radio League, and the Northeast Astronomy Forum, to name a few. He was a visionary, a conservationist, a consensus builder, and a supporter of the arts. So you will have an even better understanding of who Brian McCarthy was, I would like to share some of the Brian McCarthy that mostly only close friends and family knew. Brian was a cancer survivor. He was a fly fisherman, a photographer, an amateur astronomer, gourmet chef, a movie producer, a collector of all things, such as tin toys, robots, sci-fi movies, and orarees. Those are planetary models. He was an avid reader, a model railroad enthusiast, a designer and builder of model rockets, a chess player, and a self-proclaimed nerd before it was cool. He was also a musician. He played the piano and the guitar, and he enjoyed singing old Irish songs, and was a surprisingly good dancer. Literally, hundreds of people came to pay their respects at Brian's services, and these are some of their messages. Brian had a community-first attitude and was incredibly inspiring. He was an anchor in our community for so many years, a warm and caring and insightful individual. He was passionate about his community and poured his heart and soul into the betterment of Nashua. Leaders create leaders, not followers. Brian was beyond question a leader. And my favorite, Brian was an incredibly smart and wonderful teacher. He helped set the course for my career. These are lessons we should share with our children, that hard work, education, good listening, and positive attitudes are the skills they need to carry us forward into the future. I can think of no better role model for our children to emulate. Brian loved his family, his work, and the city he served for so many years. He shared success with everybody while he was working behind the scenes to get things done. Brian so richly deserves recognition for the extraordinary contributions he made to the city and to the education of its students. It has been three and a half years since his passing. The opportunity for that recognition is before you. I am asking you to name this new institution of learning in memory of my late husband, Brian S. McCarthy, in acknowledgement of his dedication and service to the citizens of Nashua. Thank you. And if any of you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them. And I apologize, we didn't get our email address on the.
Oh, it's okay.
On the sheet there. Thank you.
That's if, if there are questions, and we can follow up with them. I was trying to be concise. Next up is, oh geez, Mike?
Tabasco.
Is that T-A-B-A-C-S-C?
C-S-K-O.
C-S-K-O?
But we pronounce it Tabasco.
Tabasco. Spicy. Okay, I'll start the clock, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Tabasco. I live at 5 Federal Hill Road here in Nashua. I'd like to start by thanking each of you for your service as members of the National Board of Ed. But I'm here tonight in support of naming the new middle school in honor of the late Brian S. McCarthy. I was a close friend of Brian's, and I won't try to restate his impressive and lengthy record of public service. For those of you who did not have the good fortune to know or work with Brian personally, I think you missed an important chapter in the history of Nashua. I can tell you firsthand, he was easily the most dedicated public servant I have ever known. Every issue that Brian was involved in was an effort to improve the lives of all of us The term politician with a very strong negative context is being used by those opposed to naming the school for Brian. However, in my view, the negative context is out of place when speaking of Brian. All of us who have run for elective office are, by definition, politicians. The subsequent context of the term should be defined by the record of the individual. In Brian's case, his dedication and unparalleled contributions to the city of Nashua over more than 25 years provides an overwhelmingly more positive context. Building consensus, including all points of view, demonstrating the tenacity not to give up on a just cause, those are the traits I saw in Brian, a great community leader, advocate, and dedicated public servant in the truest sense of that term. With regard to the suggestions about naming other areas within the school for Brian or the various location-based names, my opinion, neither option makes sense. We do already have a school in the district named for a person, and while the locations have served us, why not take this opportunity to recognize Brian's long-term involvement in this specific project? Let's not forget, his foresight during the earliest stages of the development of the Southwest quadrant secured the land on which this school is being built. When taken in context with his long tenure on the Joint Special School Building Committee, where he was the de facto expert and leader overseeing every school-building project from the construction and rebuild of the high schools to the early stages of the current middle school's project, of which this building is a key component, I say we have a unique opportunity right here and right now. By all accounts, Brian deserves to be honored, and in my opinion, the only right solution is to name this building the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In my opinion, honoring Brian in this way is the right thing, right thing to do. Your vote tonight will make a lasting impression. I implore you to listen to your hearts and your heads and do the right thing by naming this school in honor of one of our greatest citizens. My friend, Brian McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Shaw, 14 Sweet William Circle. As many others have already spoken about, and especially written to you recently, I'm strongly in favor of naming the new middle school after Brian S. McCarthy. I had the pleasure of serving with Brian for one term as an alderman, and having many opportunities then and subsequent time to discuss many of the issues that the city faces and concerns that have come about in governing a city like ours. Also, as a fellow geek, growing up in the same era as Brian, it was a time where it wasn't cool to be a geek or, as Gloria noted, a self-proclaimed nerd. But I admired Brian's intellect and his humor and his ability to see things, but also to work through things. It was just a joy and delight to experience Brian. And there's so much about his interests in technology, in his passion for Nashua itself, for education, for all the things that so many others have already spoken about and you've heard throughout. So I think his commitment to the city and his passion for education and learning make naming the new middle school after him a perfect and fitting tribute. And I ask that you consider that for the impact that he had on the city of Nashua. Thank you for your service and for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Michael Peterson, 11 Delaware Road. I'd like to thank the board for taking public input on the naming of the middle school. And I too am in favor of naming the new middle school after Brian S. McCarthy. From the interaction I've had with Brian, he was always knowledgeable and friendly, and he has the reputation of being the person who brought this building, the one we're in, Nashua North, on schedule and under budget. And that is quite a task to be performed in today's modern construction. The other things about Brian is, he was an educator. I know a person who was studying information technology. She was having trouble learning about TCP IP protocol. Well, when Brian heard that, he took her aside, gave her a big tutorial, explained the whole thing from end to end, and now she's a professional IT employee, because Brian got her through her course. So Brian, you know, was not only a dedicated public service who got things done pragmatically, under budget, in time, he was an educator at heart, and the person, I would call a Renaissance person, who had a wide variety of interests in many things, which I think falls in perfectly with his role as promoting education and naming the school after him. What else about Brian? Well, there's more, but I'll just let it go at that. I'd ask you to please consider naming the new middle school after Brian S. McCarthy and have his legacy live on as a public service, a public servant and an educator. Oh yeah, one last thing about Brian. Brian set the example of how to work across the aisle. He didn't care about what anybody's party affiliation was. He wanted good ideas to benefit the citizens of Nashua. And in that spirit, I think he set a good example as to how to conduct yourself in public life. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Matthew Guthro? Did I say that right?
Matthew Guthro, 104 Fon Lane. I wanted to discuss the item entitled Ad Hoc Middle School Naming Committee. First and foremost, many of us in the public are unclear as to why there's a rush to name a building that hasn't even been built yet. From the passionate people that have spoken before you today, you have a very good candidate for that naming of the building. But we're, you know, we're still trying to figure out and put the pieces together. We're waiting for minutes from the meeting that was held by the members of the Special School Building Committee. It's been exactly one month since this meeting took place for the naming subcommittee, and there are no minutes for this meeting. Three people on this day has attended that meeting. The RSA clearly says that the draft minutes need to be posted five days after the meeting. So what occurred during that meeting that we need to be aware of as the public? Nobody can say what happened at City Hall yet in room 208 on noon on May 27th. This meeting took place outside the normal time and place in which you didn't get any input from staff, because they were all clearly working at the school. You didn't get any input from the public, so, because there was no notification for the meeting. So I'm just wondering what transpired at that meeting. Unfortunately, it goes to a larger pattern where transparency has become a dirty word on this board, and anyone that calls it out is labeled as a malcontent. The fact that some of you on this board have a Nashua School District email address and some do not is absolutely ridiculous. And for those of you who accepted it for it is what it is, you're not doing the will of the people who elected you for this seat. There is no school district in the state that would be so unprofessional as to have you communicate with the public either via your personal email address. But by not having a clear way for all you to communicate via email and document those interactions, it seems to be a clear attempt to circumvent the right-to-know laws in the state. I understand the interim superintendent advised you that he didn't have manpower to perform these duties. But ladies and gentlemen, Dr. McKinney works at the pleasure of this board, not the other way around. For those of you to allow an interim superintendent to wield such power over you, it leads us all to believe that this ship has no captain. So please, if you could tell us why it's so hard for the Board of Education and the Special Joint Building Committee to be transparent with the public about something as simple as naming a school that you haven't even broken ground on? Thank you.
Thank you. I do think we need to clarify, the foundation is in for the building. Ms. Timmons, I saw left. Sue Newman?
And directing this to the chair, I'm not here to speak about the ad hoc name, naming of the school building at all. So do you want me to wait until the last? I just signed on the papers there. Maybe the second comment is more appropriate.
So I already brought forth Attorney Bolton to speak about it, so I think I opened up that door for your comments.
Okay, then I will, these are unprepared comments, but I got wind that Mrs. Ziem was resigning after a number of years on this Board of Education. And I just want to say, it's been a joy knowing you, speaking with you over the years about things school and non-school related. And just as some anecdotal comments, Sandra, you might not even remember, this was probably 20 to 25 years ago, there was a real estate transaction that your office, one of your newer Realtors, and myself were involved with. I was a seasoned Realtor at the time. There was a snafu right from the get-go with it, and we met at your office and talked. You were so professional, nonjudgmental. You just listened to the situation as we both explained what had happened, and the bottom line was, let's find a solution. We want the buyer to be happy. We want the seller to be happy. We're going to get this together. And you did. I always appreciated that, because there was no finger pointing or accusations. It was something that happened, just one of those life happens things, and you took care, we took care of it together. I've always found that you listened, you looked for ways to find solutions. It didn't matter what somebody's political party was, because one time, you might not remember, I think you asked me if I wanted to be a Republican, and I declined. I don't remember if I asked you if you wanted to be--
There's still time.
Yeah. I'll still decline, Sandra, but I appreciate the kindness.
I love you anyway.
So I want to thank you for the true north compass that I think you've always held. You look for accountability, transparency, you listen, and most of all, to try and find solutions to problems that are bigger than anybody could imagine, and you've always looked out for Nashua's children. So thank you very much. Your service is appreciated. You will be missed. And with respect to all of you, I just don't think any one of you, even you, Mr. Donovan, I don't think anybody could ever have as pretty a hairstyle continuously as you always have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. That was very nice.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I thought Ms. Newman was going to give us a letter that she'd like to come back on the Board of Ed. Because she hasn't been here for so long, she misses it.
Mrs. Newman. She's not saying no.
She's running late.
Well, because she's so excited, there's a hop in her step. Liz Racioppi. Oh geez Louise. R-A-C-I-O-P-P-I.
Riccioppi.
Riccioppi?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just Italian. Liz Riccioppi. I live at 15 Middle Dunstable Road here in Nashua. I don't have any prepared statements, and those are all tough acts to follow. I'm here to speak in support of naming the middle school after Brian S. McCarthy. I had an opportunity to serve for a short while in the city and got to know Brian that way, as well as just observing him in the chamber. A man with a beautiful mind, a man who really embodies what a good education means in action. He put his education in action. I've been here in the city as a resident, and as a resident for 26 years, a business owner for 18. I've appreciated many, many of the leadership decisions he's made. I've seen it right across the board, education, the arts, you know, anything that Nashua held as value. He would listen to and put forward very, very fairly. He was an incredibly good listener and incredibly good leader, and I think he really, really deserves this honor. So please do consider. Thank you for listening to our input, and I hope you do consider naming that middle school after Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us up to the end of my list for public comment. I'll give that to you in a minute, Ms. Gilio. And this brings us up to the superintendent's comments. Are you guys, or do either one of you want to speak on his behalf or sing a song?
Sing a song?
Sure.
No, probably not. No, there's nothing specific. Dr. McKinney's on vacation, so we wish him luck in his new position and look forward to our new superintendent.
Yes. Thank you. Board response to that? Being none? Okay. It sounds like you had something to say on behalf of the student reps who are off being fantastic young adults?
They are. So on behalf of Armani Rogers, he sat with us on the Ad Hoc Naming Committee just last week. If the board takes a vote on the naming of the new middle school tonight, if the students support recognizing Brian McCarthy in some fashion that does not involve naming the school after him. Same's statement, Mr. Sameisahu, is, "I wanted to offer my final two cents on the naming of the new middle school. I know that from the early 300, nearly 300 emails, around 90 wanted to name it after a political figure who has contributed to the Nashua community, meaning that the remaining two-thirds of emails wished for the new school to be named after a geographical location, following the precedent of our current middle schools. This middle school is permanent and public opinion is not. Trust me, I know how polarizing politics can be, and I think this board would be making a grave mistake by naming the new middle school after any political figure, regardless of their impact in the community. For the sake of transparency, I strongly encourage the board members to voice their true opinions in this public meeting, rather than at a private one, and act on behalf of the survey results, to choose a name that our community can unite around, rather than divide us." And I also wanted to let you guys know, Samei called me tonight, and I have super exciting news. He has been elected the Chairman of the High School Democrats of America, effective immediately.
Wow.
The national chairman of the High School Democrats of America is granted one seat on the Democratic National Committee, DNC. And this means that at only 18 years old, he's going to be one of the youngest members in DNC history. He'll also be the youngest person of color to serve on the DNC, youngest person to ever serve from New Hampshire, as well as the youngest serving member serving during his term over the next year. As a voting DNC member, he'll have the opportunity to represent the youth across the country as he legislates behind the scenes for political causes.
Yes.
I'm going to have such a big slice of cake for him when I get home tonight. Send him pictures.
Excellent. Well, we have some shining students here. Okay, well, next up, we go back to the agenda. Committee on Budget has no updates. Next up is the Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. The Committee on Finance and Operations, we met on June 21st, 2022. My first recommendation is to approve the purchase of 318 desktop computers from IT insiders in the amount of $194,139 from account 91.1.992225.71221.
So Ms. Johnson made that motion, and Ms. Lampfier seconded? Forgot the word second for a second. I will give Ms. Gilio one second to write those down. And then, once you're done writing down who made the motions, we can go right into rule call.
Okay. I'll tell Charles.
Sorry, I always forget this. Any discussion or questions? What's a computer? No, I'm just kidding.
Ms. Starling? Oh, yes. Thank you. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond? Ms. Raymond?
Yes. Yes?
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes?
Ms. Lampfier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Yes. Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Excellent. Ms. Johnson?
I move to approve the purchase of 581 Chromebook computers and licenses from IT insiders in the amount of $138,892 from account 91.1.992225.71221.
Ms. Lampier, seconds.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I have a question. I know that, Ms. Johnson, you had been asking pretty consistently since we started issuing Chromebooks to the students about plans on accountability for the Chromebooks. Did we look, did you ask that in finance? I apologize. I didn't-
I always ask.
What was the-
There, well, some of, these are the Chromebooks that I believe that are in the school right now that didn't go home. Am I correct?
Yes. But we did, in the next section of the meeting tonight, there is a Chromebook agreement which talks about the $25 fee and the responsibilities of the student and the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I have a point of order?
Ms. Ziem?
I think, I think that we should, I misunderstood. I thought that we had already done this, and I guess we didn't. I think it's a shame for these people to have to sit and wait while we go through this whole agenda. And they're at the very bottom. And I thought we were going to make an exception, and that we could, we could do that so that they would be able to have the rest of their evening. So we did not make a motion. Is that correct?
Nope. I was waiting for whoever wanted to make the motion to speak. Did you want to, did you want to jump in?
I apologize. I actually thought that it was made when we, when we put the public hearing, or the public speakers in front. So I apologize. I would like, yes, that I'm, I believe that we should, out of courtesy to these people, we should make that motion. I make a motion that we suspend the rules and that we-
We have to vote on the other motion first.
After, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So in regards to the motion on the table, the recommendation, well, the motion to approve the purchase of 581 Chromebook computers and licenses from IT insiders in the amount of 138892 from account, what Ms. Johnson said. Ms. Gilio, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Sure. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero.
Can I just say something here? I think we should just finish up the Committee on Finance rather than break it up.
Okay.
Because I think it's going to get too complicated. I mean, even though we don't do for beta minutes, but I think even minutes and anybody watching that goes back to review it, that we broke up these motions and then go on after that. Just, you know.
I have no problem. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is, "Move to approve the OT contract from Clarks Associates in the amount of $872,917 using FY '23 budgeted funds account 91.1.022160.53614."
Second. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Lampier seconded it. Whenever you're, does any discussion or questions? Seeing none. When you're ready, Ms. Gilio, for roll call.
I am ready. Okay. So, let's see. Okay. Yep. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
I move to approve the PT contract from ABC Physical Therapy Associates in the amount of $227,083 using FY '23 budgeted funds account 91.1.022160.53614.
Second. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Lampier seconded it. I know a couple, a couple of physical therapists who work at ABC Physical Therapy, and they're, that's a great crew of people. So glad to see we're teaming with them. Any other comments or questions? We're continuing to team with them. Seeing none. Ms. Gilio, whenever you're ready, roll call vote.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
I move to approve the contract with the Adult Learning Center Clearway High School for $624,000 using FY '23 budgeted funds with $312,000 from account 91.1.02126755694 and $312,000 from account 91.1.991110.53600.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Lampier. Can I ask a follow-up question about this, Mr. Donovan? I mean, Clearway, Clearway's a fantastic high school. We've seen so many students go through it. And I know that they work with a lot of our students that don't necessarily match the normative schooling. Are we, I'm sure you explored it, but maybe you can explain why we wouldn't use ESSR funds? Because it would, it meets some of those kids' needs that may have kind of-
Well, I mean, if we use ESSR funds, this is a continuing contract we've had in place for years. So if you use ESSR funds this year, then you're just going to turn around and put it back in the budget next year. So we're trying to use ESSR funds for uses-
In the moment.
To sort of either new programs or fixing existing ones rather than-
Okay. That was all. It was just softball question. Okay. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Gilio. Any other comments or questions? Sorry.
Okay. Just one sec. Okay. This is more work than I thought it was.
Just wait till we get into non-publics and off the agenda motions.
Okay. Well, I'll take this while it's easy. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Ritten Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero.
I move to approve the contract with Train for preventative maintenance of the high school chillers with $9,295 for year one and $13,800 for the three succeeding years from HVAC maintenance account 91.1.222620.54243 and $312,000 from account 91.1.991110.53600.
Second. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Lampier seconded. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I assume I know the answer to this, but what exactly are chillers?
Chillers are part of the HVAC units in the high schools, big units.
They keep it cool. Like, it's not too cool tonight, but normally they would. Okay.
Heating and cooling, exactly.
Okay. Oh, it's both. Okay. Thank you. I just wasn't sure.
One thing about that motion, I just noticed the "and" 312 from account, that is an error that came from the previous motion. So it shouldn't be in that one.
Yep. And do we need to-
So it should end with "from HVAC maintenance account."
Do we need Ms. Johnson to-
Yes.
I'll amend it to remove $312,000 from account 91.1.991110.53600 to eliminate that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And do you continue to second that motion, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Okay. So just to read it into the record, the recommendation to approve the contract with Train for preventative maintenance of the high school chillers with $9,295 for year one and $13,800 for the three succeeding years from HVAC maintenance account 91.1.222620.54243. Period. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Gilio?
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Cool. Just kidding. Yes. It was a chiller joke. Nobody has any fun anymore. Just me. Okay. The floor is yours, Ms. Johnson.
I move to approve the FY '22 excess spending options of $896,745 made to the board as well as to consider Santa Life with the remainder of the excess funds.
Second. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Lampier seconded. Comments or questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Can we split the motion into two? Um, because I only like half of it.
What?
Because I only like half of it. I guess I don't understand that as well as to consider Santa Life with the remainder of the funds as a motion. I was at finance, I saw the list for the 800 and, well, for the, all of the things that Mr. Donovan recommended.
Mm-hmm.
I liked all of that. But if we approve the motion where it says "and," as well as to consider Santa Life with the remainder of excess funds, will we have to come back again and vote on Santa Life, or will that just be something that we've tacitly given approval to? Which, by the way, is a wonderful product. I just don't know if it's the best.
Mr. Donovan?
I know.
Yeah. When I put the list together, the list, the 896,000, those are specific items that we can do the purchase orders and an escrow request to do. The Santa Life was, here's what we think is going to be left. I haven't finalized that number yet. I'm still waiting for the year to close. Very close, but there's still more information coming in. So that was partially why I think the motion was done that way. If you want to break it into two, to approve the 896 for those specific items listed, and then do a second motion, that might make sense, because we don't have that, a clear number of what that is yet.
Mm-hmm.
I'm estimating $600,000 now.
Okay. Yeah, we saw their presentation at the JSSBC meeting. That's good. Looks like a fantastic opportunity to invest in that for our schools. Ms. Johnson, do you want to break them up into two motions?
I can. You just said that there'd be about $600,000, you think, an estimate?
Yes, that was my, I did a quick update of the forecast after the meeting last week, and now my number's 600. But at the end of June, let's say in another week or so, I can update it again. That's why I think it makes sense to break it into two motions.
Okay.
So we can do it. I can break it down. And recommendation, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Recommendation to approve the FY '22 excess spending options of $296,745 made, how do you want me to put that? Because then there's 600,000, because there's 896. So I'm going to make it for 296, and the 600 to Santa Life.
No, no, no. The 600 would be on top of it. So I think the first motion should be recommend to approve this school year '22 excess spending options of 896,745 as listed on the spreadsheet made to the board. And then just end that motion.
Give me a minute.
Okay.
Okay. And did Ms. Lampier withdraw her second of the previous motion?
I'm in support of the change, so.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Thank you. Okay. Okay. So I'm ready on that motion.
So on the, we broke up the two, broke up the motion into two. If you're ready, you can do roll call.
Okay. This is part one, I guess.
Yes.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
And that flips over to the next page, which makes no sense. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. And now we go backwards. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. Who did I leave out? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ziem, did I get you?
No.
No? Okay. I'm getting you now.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So now there's going to be an additional motion, right?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Brown. Did I, flipping the page made me really, you know, I can just do it again. Were there any nays? There weren't, right?
Did you vote, Ms. Lampier?
No. But yes, I wanted to vote yes.
And, okay.
Ms. Lampier votes yes.
And Ms. Brown? I'm sorry. See, I'm not cut out for this role, really, but I'll do my best.
There's a learning curve.
Yeah, but I'm pretty old to be learning new tricks.
It's good for you. Okay. So that motion passes, and you wanted to break it up. Do you want to come back to the table to consider the Santa Life for the remainder of the excess funds once you know more numbers? Or do you want to?
That, that might be better.
Okay.
So you're going to bring the numbers back in July?
Yes.
To our next meeting, and then we'll bring it back to the board?
Yes. Because we'll have to do that via the escrow process anyway.
Right. And July 25th gives you enough time to get-
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Floor is back to you, Ms. Johnson.
I move to approve the FY '22 May transfer report.
Second. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Lampier seconded.
Okay. They're all on one page now, so I should get this right. Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Great. Nine zero. Motion carries.
And last, but not least, I move to send a security project to the Joint Special School Building Committee for review.
Second.
Questions? No? Okay. All right. So, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
So that carries nine zero as well.
Excellent. So I think Ms. Ziem had put on the table a request to-
Make a motion, yes.
We're going to do a new motion, right?
Yep.
Make a motion that we waive the rules so that we can take the naming of the new middle school before the other agenda items.
So your motion is to modify the agenda to address the middle school naming?
Yes. And I, whether it's passes or not, I would like to apologize to the people who were hardy enough to sit through this. I am so sorry. I obviously misunderstood in my conversations with Mrs., Mrs.?
Gilio.
Gilio. Thank you. And Mrs. Bishop, I thought that you were going to be put in front. I apologize to you. I'm sorry you had to sit through all of this, because I'm sure you're all tired and want to go home and get to bed.
So I'll second Ms. Ziem's motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. Here we go. Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Claffey?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Gilio, yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
So we are now moving the agenda out of order, and we are going to be discussing the ad hoc middle school naming committee suggestions. We did not come to a consensus at the last meeting. It was split two to two. So we have no recommendations from the committee to give to the board unless, of course, the board is taking it upon themselves to make a motion on their own without a recommendation.
Can I, can I make a motion?
Yes, Ms. Lampier.
I'd like to make a motion that we name the school after Brian S. McCarthy.
I second.
Okay. Ms. Lampier made the motion to-
There's no, please, that motion's not in here.
Nope. This is, this is the fun part.
Oh, this is where I get to write a lot.
Off the books.
Okay.
Really good at figuring out when I write in corners and stuff.
Okay. So.
So just make like an asterisk.
Ms. Lampier made the motion.
Mm-hmm. Ms. Ziem seconded it.
To.
Would you like an extra, there's spare paper in there, but I think you'll be fine.
I have some, but I just can't get it out right.
So to name the new middle school.
The Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. Is that what she said?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was seconded by Ms. Lam, oh, it was made by Ms. Lampier, seconded by Ms. Ziem.
Brian.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
And Ms. Ziem seconded, right?
Yes.
Okay. She's never going to be able to read this.
And then Ms. Brown?
I would, I have to tell you, unfortunately, this has become way more controversial than I think it should have ever become. But as I sat here tonight and, and listened to these people, I have to say that I vote conscience. I do not vote party line, ever. It's not who I am. And I have examined my conscience inside and outside in the 14 years that I've been on this board. Brian was, he was, he was the chair of the Joint Special School Board for as long as I was on it. He passed away three years ago. I've been 14 years, so that was 11 years. I have to think he was on there quite a few more years than the 11 I was on there. But having said that, the thing that, I didn't always agree with Brian. He was, he was a strong, he was a leader. He was, so he was strong. You have to be strong to be a leader. And you have to be decisive, and you have to make decisions, and he certainly did that. I agree with you. He was very decisive. I remember one night that I voted no, and I was the only one, and he came to me afterwards, and he said, "What's wrong? What, what, why did you do that?" And in the conversation, he revealed a lot of himself to me in the way he responded to, to my disagreement on the board with him. He, he, he showed me his great love of our, of our schools. He showed me his great love. He, he said that, I was relatively new at the time, and he said to me how many schools we have, and you can't, we get bonds. We bond these when we, when we improve our schools. The basic way we do it is bonding because we don't have money in our budgets to even maintain them, basically. And he said, "If you don't put them on this rotating schedule, and you don't have them lined up so that you sequentially go from one to the next to the next, ultimately your buildings will fall into disrepair and you'll have a mess." And I went away thinking that was pretty sound. I thought it was pretty sound. But never so much as just recently, I had occasion to speak to the aldermen in the Manchester Schools. And I spoke with several of them, and it, and two of them specifically were adamant they couldn't understand how our buildings were in so much better condition than the buildings in Manchester. For those of you who follow education, you know that Manchester is the most similar school district in our state. We're the two largest districts, and we have the most in common. They had, actually, I think somebody said 20 buildings to me. I think we, I commonly hear the number here, 22. But we're very similar in our sizes. Their buildings are a mess. It comes because they didn't have a Brian McCarthy. And I was, I was also reminiscing, because this is the end of my career, I, I am reminiscing tonight. Tonight is a night for me of nostalgia. And this was very nostalgic because some of the alder, aldermen that were, were more predominant when I was back beginning my career here. But I had to think that regardless of who this building is named after, Brian's heritage is that our schools are better, and because our schools are better, our children are going to be better. Our learning experiences are going to be better because it makes a difference when you have good facilities. It just does. And, and our buildings are where they are because of his dedication, because of his, because of, because of his commitment to our children and to our district. And so I have to say that in good conscience, I cannot vote against Brian. Absolutely could not because I think it would be, I would not be following my conscience, which has been dictated to me through these 14 years. And so, so for that reason, I will be voting. I hope that the rest of you will, but if you don't, I understand. I especially appreciated this man who had the courage to come tonight and speak his differences. If there's anything we as a city need, as a state, as a nation need, it's to be able to express our differences civilly. It's to be able to communicate, to teach our children to be free thinkers. He obviously is a free thinker. I want you to know that I appreciate whenever you come to a group like this and you know you're going to be the minority, it's very difficult because you, 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 it's difficult because you know that there will be, most of the people will be disagreeing with you. And that's all right because that's healthy. But having sat through the 14 years that I knew Brian, I can tell you, I think it would not be honorable of me not to say that he was worthy of any honor that they give him, and even more. And I also, it was said to me that the, I guess Dr. Chris was named after an individual, and so it is not, to be honest with you, I think that he embodies what we are. He embodies free thinking. He embodies encouraging, he embodies education. He embodies all of the things that, that I have tried to strive for on my limited time. And so I will be voting for Brian. But please know that I respect everybody's right to disagree. And those of you that I disagree with, it doesn't mean you're right or wrong. It just means, it just means that we have different experiences, and our experiences are based on those differences. And above all else, I pray that we can have this meeting kindly and civilly, and we can come to a conclusion, and that, that it will be done so that our children can use it as a role model going from here. Someone once said to me that we are the, as leaders of our city, we are role models for our children. And it's very important how we do that. It's very important how we communicate and how we talk to each other and express our differences. So I would ask you all to, leaving as I leave here, I, I, I wish you all well, and I pray that you will, that you will have the wisdom and the strength to do what you need to do to make this board the board that I believe our community needs, our children deserve, and that you can make if you, if you set your minds to doing it. So thank you for listening to my hot air.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Brown?
So, thank you, Ms. Seem, for your honest thoughts. I always love hearing them. So at the ad hoc committee, I made an alternative motion, so we didn't come, have, we couldn't come to a consensus and move anything forward. And I moved that the ad hoc committee name the school Buck Meadow or Coldbrook or Meadowbrook or Cherrywood. And we made lots of offers based on location of the school that was a little bit more neutral and based on the natural surroundings, and also provide naming opportunities for areas on the campus to name other inspirational leaders. Because we've gotten hundreds of emails with wonderful citizens in Nashua who deserve recognition in all kinds of ways. And I think we are missing an opportunity to celebrate more individuals and to give kids even more role models to look up to by not kind of diversifying those opportunities. My primary reasons for supporting that were the consistency of tradition with the city having a location-based name. I think it's a slippery slope to name a school after a politician, no matter how worthy and wonderful of an individual they are. And there's always a risk of dividing the community based on personal feelings. And I think the public school is a place where everyone should walk in and feel welcome and feel equal ownership of the space. So that's, would be my preference. But the reason I cannot support Brian McCarthy actually comes down to more of the policy and procedural experience that has transpired, not just now, but over the last eight, 10, 12, 20 months. When I, my time spent in the workforce before I was, joined the Board of Education, I actually worked in the executive offices of a, of a heavy construction company. I worked as a teacher. And then most recently, I worked for a lot of nonprofits. And my construction experience and education experience, the fact that I have schools, kids in the district, really was the catalyst that triggered me wanting, the fact that they were doing the middle school building was what made me actually run for the Board of Education. So my first two years on the Board of Education, I volunteered to be on the JSSBC committee. And it was honestly, I feel the, like, the Board of Education members were, are on there just as figureheads to fill holes. All the decisions are made before you get there. They take very little feedback, and the questions are minimized. And the frequent standard procedure of operations seems to be that everything's urgent. Every time that the chair of the JSSBC would bring something before the committee, there was this huge sense of urgency that if we don't vote on it tonight, we're going to, it's going to cost us triple the amount of money. So you, no, don't ask any questions, just agree to the money. And it's not just about the money, it's about the fact that you're not giving people, the audience, the community, opportunities to weigh in on things when you do these rush-through issues. And that is exactly what's happened here with this naming committee. Apparently, and the board didn't even know this, there was, so the JSSBC actually made their own mini-committee, which considered, consisted of two JSSBC members and two board members. The Board of Education actually has a policy already in place, and then they brought, and then Ms. Bishop and Ms. Raymond brought that before the board to vote on. There was a policy FF that was kind of buried down below that I don't think anyone, I honestly, I didn't know about it except for the fact that a previous board member from the community emailed the board and let us know that the policy even existed, that we already have a procedure in place. Had someone, we didn't, A, the board didn't do our homework, B, I think we would have gone through with that project, and that, again, the decision was already made and promises were already made by members of the JSSBC that ignored our policies, whether intentionally or not intentionally, and then they got caught. So then we developed a committee with the Board of Education under the policy, which I volunteered to serve on, Ms. Darling, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Bishop, and then the alternate as Ms. Johnson. And the meeting they decided to hold was one where I actually had already volunteered to be on a hiring committee. There was a committee that was already scheduled by Alderman Dowd before we had even voted on naming our committee on May 27th. I got an email on two nights before that said, and I said, "Sorry, I can't go." It's a noon time meeting in the middle of the day, where they were planning on voting on this thing without taking any consideration from the community, without taking in any consideration for the colors, and specifically from the teachers and the students who I think deserved to have a voice in this particular. There's going to be a whole group of teachers that move over to that new school that want to have some piece of it, just as much as the community members that deserve a piece of it as well. And one of the alternate, when I wasn't available, the alternate from the committee wasn't even informed that they were having a meeting. So it's kind of been brushed aside as, oh, that was just a faux pas of the JSSBC. But in reality, it's my belief that it was an opportunity to avoid hearing differing opinions. And I think that is what this board does over and over again. It's what we did on the superintendent search. It's what we, we don't listen to teachers most of the time, we, when they deserve to be heard. And this is another opportunity that we are, we've been kind of solicited by friends and family of a really deserving, wonderful man. But it was in a backdoor method that I think Alderman Dowd and honestly, the chair and vice chair of this committee, they disrespected the procedure and the policy. And it's by continuing to agree to pass things through on, of things of a trivial nature with backdoor policy, backdoor politics, and manipulations and secrecy, and the lack of transparency, we're essentially condoning it, and I can't continue to do that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
So I didn't know anything about Brian McCarthy when this, all this came up. I've only been in Nashua for a short time, and I learned a lot about, about Mr. McCarthy, and I'm so happy to be able to vote for him. But I'm not voting for him because that's what I want to do. I'm voting for him because that's what the community wants. We put it out to the community. We said, "Please let us know who, what you would, how you would like the new middle school to be named." And we got many, many, many emails. And we got a lot from Mr. McCarthy, a lot, a lot. And we also got some emails, a lot of emails. We got some for Coldbrook and some for Cherrywood and some for Buck Meadow. We got some for, you know, to name the school after the indigenous lands. We got some people that grew up in Nashua. We got a woman who was on one of the planes that crashed on 9/11. We even got a really nice one that was like a tribute to a man in town, and I can't remember his last name, but I believe his first name was Andre. And he worked for the DPW for a long time, and he passed away during COVID. And it was just such a nice email that was sent to us. But the thing is, is that there's no consensus on the other side. We have to make a decision. We have to name the school after somebody, and the community is telling us, "Name it after Brian McCarthy." On one side, many of them, and on the other side, we have a whole group with no consensus. I just think it's clear that Brian McCarthy is what the community wants. So I'm honored to vote for him. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I've done, and I spoke earlier about this whole thing. I just wish that when the meeting in 208 happened, when Ms. Alderman Dowd said in the email, "Meeting stands. Any issues, call me." And you were invited, Ms. Raymond was invited, Alderman Wiltshire was invited. Let's see, Dr. McKinney was invited. That was the original email. Then I guess you added a few more people to it, which I wasn't. I served on Joint Special School Building Committee with Alderman McCarthy when I was on this board and when I became an alderman. I worked with him on a lot of stuff. We didn't agree all the time, but that's fine, you know? My husband doesn't agree with me most of the time either. But that's, that's good because then you're getting everybody's point of view, and you work together. We compromised. That's what I see on this board. There's not even an art of compromising to work things out together. And I guess that's what sticks with me, is the minutes of that meeting. I really want to know the minutes of that meeting, what went on. And so I've been taking tallies here because that's who I am. And there was 119 for Alderman McCarthy. And I might have had a couple of people that don't live in the city. If you don't live in Nashua, I'm not counting the men because they're not paying the bill. I did read what they said, and I appreciate it. Altogether, there was 250 other people for all different names. The number one name was definitely Buck Meadow. That began, begins with a B not with any other letter, Buck Meadow. There was 57, and then the remainder were just scattered names. But there were a lot of people in the community that did come out and give their consensus on what they wanted to name the middle school. I think this board, we can compromise on a name here. And I think, and people might not like it, I think it should be the Brian S. McCarthy Buck Meadow School. And this way, you have the area, and you're still naming it for him, and it's more of a compromise. Because, I mean, things were said, and I truly believe it was done behind closed doors, which it shouldn't have been. A former board member also wrote, "Not everyone on the committee seems to agree. The board received 99 emails that favored naming the school after Brian McCarthy and 187 that had a different opinion. By a nearly two to one margin, you have been told the public wants a neutral name." And yet, a member that sat there and said, "I'm just going to say no until it's McCarthy." Now, that's not working and compromising. I had to learn when I was on the Board of Aldermen to compromise, or nothing got put through. And I sat with former Alderman Rob Shaw. We sat together. And Alderman McCarthy, I believe, was the president then too, and so was Dave Rudovich for two years. So we sat, and although we all did not get along, and I even sat with former Alderman Tim Nickerson, and him and I sat together, and we had a great time. And Attorney Bolton was on the board with me also. And we worked together because what did we do? We compromised on. We compromised on things, because we had to for the betterment of, whether it was the school that we passed on or for the city. So I think there's ways that we could compromise, maybe have the name out front, and also have the name of the area too, that will make everybody happy in this community. Because Alderman McCarthy was a great man. He did a lot for this. I mean, I squawked when I ran, because I ran with former Alderman Rob Shaw's wife, Kim. We sat together on the board together, on this board. And this was the Brock's Pit, gravel pit back then. And people don't know the history of this, what we're sitting on. It was a gravel pit, and the front of the building was actually the back of the building, and this side is, should have been the front with the heated sidewalks. Things became a mess. But I will say that we did work together. And there was a way that we can compromise and make the family happy, and also make the community happy here. And I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and let's work to get this done. Because to say that we're not going to do anything and dig our heels in the sand, does it have to be tonight? No, it could be, we can have another meeting and bring something back to the full board again, and talk to the family and see if we make some compromise and see if that can work for them and the community. So that's how I feel, and I think it's a good beginning. But we haven't had that beginning, and we haven't had the conversation. It was just, the meeting was in room 208, then we had two ad hoc committees, then people dug their heels in the sand. If it's not this, I'm not voting on anything else. You can't do that. That's not how we work to help the kids and to get this school the way it should be. Thank you.
Ms. Darling?
Call me malcontent. Did any of us not say that we were going to fight for more transparency for the public during our elections? Because I, I feel like I did. I feel like I heard everybody saying that. And I know transparency isn't always possible. We do a lot of things that are confidential, and we can't, and in non-public, and we can't talk about those things. I get it. But for me, making transparency and the BOE be more accessible to our average family has always been a really big thing for me. You know, we keep talking about this meeting on 523, and, or not 523, 527. And it's, you guys want to know what transpired at that meeting? What we're hiding? So the meeting minutes would end up showing you that not only did we vote unanimously to bring Brian's name to the full board, it was also outright acknowledged that we were not going to consult with the public on the naming. We would consult with the public on the colors and the mascot. I also voted for this. It was unanimous. I was under the impression at the time that it was something that needed to be decided right then during that meeting, and that we could not wait. Whether that was the intended outcome or not of that meeting doesn't really matter. That was my takeaway. I do believe we should wait for the meeting minutes to be up. It drives me nuts that they're not, and that we have the policy for them to be. And when we're being called out on shady stuff, and then we can't access the minutes, it just looks even shadier. And we're trying right now to prove to the public that they can trust us with the most important thing the city has, and that's the kids. And I guess the, there's no doubt in my mind that Brian McCarthy was an absolutely amazing man. And I mean, every time I hear his daughter speak about him, I have to stop myself from crying. And I, when I came into this, there was no doubt in my mind that, you know, if anyone was going to have a building named after him, it would be him, and that it would be, it would be the right thing to do. But of everything I've learned about him, he would not be advocating for pushing it through in the manner that we've been doing it. He would not be okay with these back deals. And I didn't know him, so I can't speak for him. But his daughter said earlier tonight that to name the school for Mr. McCarthy is the right thing to do, because he would have done the same for anyone else. And that got me thinking, as a former member of this board had also given me advice that was used a lot during our mask debates. The minority is often loud, but it's important we recognize the silent majority. Silent majority are the individuals who didn't email us. The families who have no ties to public service, have no idea who Brian McCarthy is, have no idea how to access the school board, what the school board's job is, and we don't tell them. So they have no reason to know. Those are the people that I'm trying to represent. And I spent my entire weekend talking to every human being I came across, and I asked them, "If you could name a school, what would you name it?" And every single one of them came up with fun, or landmarks, or geographical features. And this wasn't even about the middle school. Just, "If you had a school, what would you name it?" Nobody said a person. And that wasn't a Brian McCarthy thing. That was just, nobody said any person. And I mean, I, I like Ms. Johnson's idea. If, if both worlds here really, truly feel that, you know, Brian McCarthy is worth memorializing, which he is, no doubt in my mind there. And we also want to respect the public who doesn't know who that is, why not go for both the street name and his name? And I understand, like, I've been called out for negotiating and trying to make everybody happy. But at the end of the day, isn't that how we get things done? It doesn't always have to be five people say one thing and four say another, or we can compromise, and we can work together. That's why we work, right? Somebody? Maybe?
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I would support that compromise.
I'd like to make a motion.
There's already one on the table.
Can you remind us what the motion is? I think it's-
To name the middle school the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. Ms. Lambfier made the motion, Ms. Seem seconded it. So I'll, if we have no other comment, we can vote. If it doesn't pass, we can go back to-
I have a comment.
-starting over.
Can I move the question? Can I move the previous question?
Yeah, we have to take a vote on it. Are we done with discussion? Well, are we, we have to take a vote on, so Mr. Claffey jumped in with a call to vote, which is another, which is a point-of-order vote. So you have to write that down, and then we have to do it. Yep. I know. So the vote yes is if you want to continue on with the discussion. The vote no is no, and continue on with the vote for the name. So.
So we're calling the vote?
Yep.
We're just voting on whether we're going to continue?
Yes. So I'll, I'll go around the circle and do this.
Okay.
Yep, just to write, like, initials, and then yes or no. Ms. Darling?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Say it again. A yes on this motion means we stop discussion and move towards the vote.
Yes.
And a no means we continue to talk.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for helping me understand.
Did I say that backwards?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, you didn't. I just wanted to make sure that I was following along properly.
Okay.
So yes is to restate this, yeah, could we restate it?
So Mr. Claffey called the vote. So if you want to continue discussing, say no. If you want to vote, say yes. So Ms. Darling, would you like to continue discussing, or do you want to vote?
I am ready to vote.
Okay. So on the call to question, Ms. Darling votes yes. Ms. Gilio votes yes?
That means we're going to go ahead and vote.
Yes. Yes. It's just your microphone isn't on. Your mic isn't on. That's why I was repeating what you said.
Okay, so yes, okay. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yesses and two nos. The motion carries.
So we go back to the initial motion, which is Ms. Lamphier's motion to, she moves to name the new middle school the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School, seconded by Ms. Seem. And it is a vote now, no more discussion. So Ms. Darling?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Claffey?
Do this nice and carefully, okay?
Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the tally is that we have one, two, three, four, five, six yesses and three nos. The motion carries.
Okay. So the new middle school will be named the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. Okay, thank you, guys. I know we're excited. Now we will continue on with the rest of our agenda.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a related question?
Uh, maybe?
It's an easy one. The question is, what's the plan for the colors and the mascot? Because the urgency on picking the name was name first and colors and mascot. And the architects reminded us on Thursday night at JSBC that they do need to get materials ordered because of the backlog and shipping things right now.
Right.
So, so what's, what's next? Is that, is admin going to do that, or is something else-
Well, we made a motion-
That we have to try and figure out?
We made a motion at that, the initial ad hoc meeting that, not the initial, the special, the special full board meeting we had on that Friday, that Central Office was supposed to present to us a mascot and colors by the 30th. So I will have to check in. I think Dr. McKinney's on, he's not here for the rest of the week. So I'll have to figure out tomorrow what's going on with that. I know that we had wanted to get all of this out prior to the end of school so that kids had access to surveys and participating in picking colors and mascots. I don't know where that stands right now, so I will have to check in. I think we might be running into an issue where the motion that we made as a board is not going to be met by Central Office. I'll have to deal with that. Ms. Brown?
Can I ask if the Central Office had received the minutes from our Friday night meeting in time to complete their tasks?
So-
So the answer, I'll answer that. The answer to that is, I don't think so. I emailed out pictures of the notes that I took, because we didn't have the books, so I took them in my notebook while we were still in the boardroom. But for whatever reason, they just hung out until, I don't know what day, until I got, I got something back saying something had not been delivered. And then you responded, and Ms., um, no, maybe it wasn't you. Maybe it was just Ms. Bishop that responded to me and Ms. Cancela that Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I know Jessica had sent it off-
So I don't know what happened.
Had sent it off earlier on the day on Monday.
I did the same thing at our last meeting this past Thursday, where I sent it directly from the room before we left, because I, we had JSSC later that evening. And I checked in with her today to make sure she had it, because I wanted to make sure we didn't have the same problem. And they do have those, they just haven't typed them up yet.
Yeah, and I know one of, one of the things that I had stated when we were coming up with creating that special meeting was to ensure that whatever votes happened could get back to Central Office timely, and requested that, you know, people from Central Office who would be in charge of, you know, whatever information needed to come out be present. Unfortunately, they didn't come, so we didn't know first thing Monday morning that information hadn't gotten back to them because of the, I guess, the return to email. But Jessica sent it out at like 10:00 in the morning to Garth and Tara and Stacy. And we had requested that this information, I think the email go out by noon on Monday requesting input from the Board of, requesting input from the community to the Board of Education in regards to their input on the naming. Once the naming was done, I mean, we had, we wanted the naming to happen first, and then the mascot and colors to be picked. But the majority vote on the board was just have Central Office pick a mascot and colors by the 30th with no regard to what the name was. So that's where we stood. It is not the 30th yet. Maybe they have an idea on what they want to do. But it was kind of a, it was kind of a hot mess, that, that whole two weeks. Ms. Brown?
I actually want to apologize to the Central Office staff. I had actually already sent an email to the Communications Director. I knew the answer to the question was, you guys didn't receive the information in time, which was not your fault. And yes, we needed, we needed to do this process. We wanted the process to be transparent for the teachers and the students. And I don't think the board did our due diligence on that. I think even out of our frustration and back and forth with Central Office, my apologies to you, and I just want to know that my feeling is the onus on this whole fiasco goes on the board, board leadership, and our continuance of not being transparent or being very good communicators. So that is my apology to you guys and to the teachers who deserve the chance to weigh in, especially from Elm Street teachers, before the end of the school year, so you can have some, some piece of ownership over that new facility. So.
Anyone else? Okay. So we will be moving on. Heather, are you ready to do your Committee on Policy? It's a lot.
I am. Let me know if you guys have trouble hearing me, and then I can ask someone else to do it. But we met on the 21st, and we did a lot. So I'm just going to go right into the motions, and then if people have questions, you can ask them. So I move to approve policy JICT, the Student, Parent, Guardian Chromebook Agreement. Sorry.
Do I have a sec? Everyone just left. I need to make sure I have a call. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six, just counting.
I'll second it.
Ms. Lamphier seconded that. Any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Raymond?
I'll just point out, oh, sorry, I'll just point out that the updates to this policy came from our people at the city who do risk management. So this has been vetted by legal at the city level.
We have five now. Just for the record, Ms. Darling, Ms. Seem, and Ms. Brown are no longer in the horseshoe. It is 8:06. Okay, so I'll, we still have to do roll call.
If they're not here, do I mark it as an extension?
They just didn't vote. You need to put your mic, you need to put your mic on. All right, Jimmy.
I'm sorry, Jimmy.
So, Ms. Gilio, when people, when people step out, I just circle their name. And I write a little arrow, and I write "stepped out," and then the time that they left. And then, when they return, I write it in the margin that they've returned. I don't, I don't know what Ms. Cancela does with that, but that's how I've always marked it on the sheet.
I'm probably going to have to spend time with Ms. Cancela, or she's never going to get through what I've written tonight.
No, she'll, they, they listen to this, so they're able to watch the evolution of-
Okay, so we're ready to take a vote. And Ms. Darling has stepped out. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond is-
Yes.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown, you're just back in time to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
JICT.
Ms. Seem has stepped out. Ms. Johnson is here?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yesses and two people out of the room.
Yes, motion passes. Floor is back to you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. I move to approve policy GCOA, Evaluation of Athletic Coaches.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Any comments or questions?
I need one second.
This update is just regarding the fact that they're no longer on their teacher's contract. They have their own system of supervision-
They have their own system of supervision and compensation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, okay. I'm back. Who made the motion?
Ms. Raymond made the motion and Mr. Claffey seconded.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, and so we're ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is on the Evaluation of Athletic Coaches.
Policy GCOA.
Okay. So, Ms. Darling?
GCOA, is what you said?
GCOA, okay, yes. Okay, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
No, okay. All right, Ms. Seem is still not with us. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses, one no, and one person out of the room.
Motion passes. Floor is back to you, Heather. Ms. Raymond?
Okay. Yep. I move to approve policy JLCJA, Emergency Plan for Sports-Related Injuries.
Comment, oh, we need a second.
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconded. Any comments or questions?
This is a policy that is required by a state law.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Okay, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem? Nope, still gone. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries eight with one person absent, so it carries.
Floor is back to you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. I move to approve policy JLCJ, Concussions and Head Injuries for Student Athletes. And again, this is one that is required by law. Our athletic director and our nursing staff work together.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconded. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Ms. Giglio, when you're ready.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
I stepped out. I stepped out of the room, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Ms. Johnson? And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries eight with one abstention.
Back to you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. Yep. I move to approve policy EBCB, which is Fire Safety.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconded.
Okay. This is an existing policy. Our local fire marshal had some updates for us.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Ms. Giglio, when you're ready.
Yep. So, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Floor is back to you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. I move to approve policy EB, which is the Joint Loss Management Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconded.
Thank you. This is an existing committee, a committee of employees, not a committee of the Board. And we are renaming it and doing some updates to the policy to comply with the language that the Labor Board uses.
Excellent. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Ms. Giglio, when you're ready.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Back to you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. Thanks. I move to approve policy EBCA, Emergency Operations Plan.
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconded. Any comments or questions?
Just very quickly, this was, this is a policy that's required by state law, actually all the rest of the marshals, I'll just say that now. And if anyone on the Board has questions about our emergency operations plans or our school safety plans, they can speak to the superintendent who will put them in touch with our Director of Security because a lot of the details of those plans are not public.
Right.
For safety reasons.
Yep, thank you. So on the vote, when you're ready, Ms. Giglio.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Again, nine to zero, motion carries.
Ms. Raymond?
Okay. I move to approve policy EBB regarding school safety.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Would you like to speak to this?
No, it's the same exact explanation as the plan before it.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
It's a policy report.
Seeing none. Ms. Giglio, when you're ready.
Okay, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio, you votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. And then the last one is just test keeping. I move to rescind policy ADB, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free Schools.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Comments, questions?
Just to speak to this one very quickly, we still require a drug-free workplace and drug-free schools, but we have that policy under G, GBEC for employees requiring them to not drink drugs at school and then also under students in the J policy. This is just a duplicate and a third place we have to update every time. It seems redundant.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Giglio.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. I have a bunch of old ones that we're working on for July and a few more updates because of new laws that were passed this year that can affect between now and the school year. I'll see you guys in July.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now we're on to the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
So we met on June 20th. Our first motion is to approve the contract with the Teaching and Learning Alliance for elementary lab sites in the amount of $171,600 paid by Esser and Title II funds. These are going to be hands-on teacher experiences and where they're going to have mentors from the TLA coming in and, and giving them guidance both in the classroom and for, over the course of the entire school year.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Claffey? Okay. Are we ready? Okay. Ms. Darling? Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Nine zero. Carries.
The next, I move to approve the purchase of the World History and American History textbooks by Houghton and Mifflin in the amount not to exceed $153,000 paid for out of Esser funds.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Thank you for our resident history teacher. We, so they did bring a textbook in. Some of the print dates were the 90s and early 2000s. Bindings were in terrible shape. And there was an update in our board packet that was slightly edited from the meeting because there just was a misprint on one of the quotes, but it is, has been corrected. And so there was some change in there, like, that was a few hundred dollars either way, which is why we put the not to exceed.
Okay, got you. Okay. Ms. Darling?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, other questions?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes. That was the meeting I didn't attend because I was ran late, I guess. If I can ask Mr. Claffey just to kind of give me an overview because I couldn't watch anything on this, the history of these new textbooks, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So the head teachers from each high school came and spoke about the urgent need for new books. As Ms. Brown said, they brought in, I believe it was from 1999. I don't, I don't think they've had new books for World History and U.S. History since 2004. Does that sound right?
I think that's what they said. It was 2004, 2005. And the current book they're using is not in print anymore. So they actually needed, they couldn't get enough books to cover all the classes.
I guess if the dog ate it, you'd be out of luck, right?
Unfortunately, the dog didn't eat the one copy that they brought, so. Somebody was nibbling.
So on, if I may continue. So on the, I know that there was an RSA that said that they have to pass X amount or they don't graduate if they don't pass.
I think you're asking about the citizenship test requirement, which was separate, separate. There was no specific request made. It was more of an informational-
Yeah, so for the-
That part, sorry.
No, it's all right. I can speak to that a little bit if you'd like. So there is, for this year's freshmen and sophomores, we're going to be the first class that have to pass the U.S. Citizenship Test to graduate. So they did come in, and that wasn't aligned with the World History and American History books. That was, they were discussing editing some of the course materials and curriculums that, so they can make sure that all of the subjects on the citizenship test are hit. So we're going to be getting an up, we actually asked for an update, was it the first of the year? Maybe? I think it was, I can't remember if it was October or first of the year, but we will be getting an update further on how the classes are edited to make sure that the students are having frequent opportunities to take the test because I think they can take it unlimited times, but they must take it in order to graduate.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have an aside. When I was a junior in college, my dog actually did eat my history textbook. Truly, he did. Okay, so, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Oh, did you vote yes, Ms. Johnson? I'm sorry, I couldn't. The years are going now.
Yes.
Thank you. So we carry nine zero, motion carries.
I move to accept the flow capillary subscription in the amount of $16,651.21 paid by Esser Funds. The flow capillary is, it's kind of like rap songs to teach kids different stuff. It was actually really cool. Dr. Sarfati played us a little demo and it's just kind of a way to use mnemonic devices to help you remember different things and learn all different subjects. It was pretty cool.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
My last aside, I actually used to teach the Dewey Decimal Rap to my library students. I'll be quiet now, okay? Except for my deemed role. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Mr., Ms. Raymond? Ms. Raymond?
Yes, although I would really enjoy hearing Rap the Dewey Decimal Rap.
I think I'll dig it out. I'll dig it out, okay. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, carries nine zero.
Floor is back to you, Ms. Brown.
I'm sorry. I move to approve the purchase of Miller Biology License for $10,875 to be paid for using Esser Funds.
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none. Ms. Giglio?
Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
9-0. Motion carries.
I move to approve the iXL Math Screener License in the amount of $11,000 to be paid for by Esser Funds.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I will say, so there was also an update from, originally in our packet, we just had an update verbal from Dr. Sarfati, but in our packet, you got a kind of a few little pages from what the screener looks like and kind of a basic on what it does. This is a, kind of a real-time opportunity for people to, teachers can give this math screener to their students at the beginning of the year and then frequently throughout the year, and then all the way at the end, whereas iReddy and different things, you have to, there's a little bit of a waiting period before you can use the tests. So this actually gives them a real-time opportunity to see where students are achieving and need a little extra work. And it came highly, this was actually highly recommended from the teachers.
No further comments?
Okay, Ms. Darling?
Oh, I just, can I, can I say thank you to Dr. Sarfati for putting that in the packet? It was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I can have Ms. Brown pass that along to her at the next committee meeting.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio, yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
9-0. Motion carries.
That's all we have from Kirkland Innovation until next month, and we'll spend some more of your Esser Funds.
Ms. Seem, Human Resources?
Yes, we had Human Resources earlier tonight, and so the first thing we need to do is make a motion to, to make an exception of our rules so that we can bring forward the recommendations from the HR Committee.
I'll second. We have the rules.
Mm-hmm. Seem and Brown?
Yeah. Okay. Yep.
On the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. She, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I thought you just needed a minute to read everything out, so I thought I'd help out.
Well, I did because now there's like a second motion, but that's okay. I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It works itself out.
It, it does.
Okay.
The HR Committee recommends that we approve Jonathan, Jothan, J-O-T-H-A-N, Jack with Massey, excuse me. He was wonderful. Assistant Principal National High School North for 2023, 2022, '23 school year at a salary of, can't even read it, $83,000.
$3,000.
Is that right? Eighty-three?
Second.
He came in earlier and he was, he spoke well. He was wonderful. We were all impressed with him.
I'll second the motion.
The interesting thing is, he's coming from south to north. So the liaisons are going to have a good, good opportunity there.
Just let me know. You can start doing the roll call whenever you're ready.
Okay. Then I am ready. So, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio, yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
There were two other motions that came forward from HR, and I was lucky enough to have Mrs. Brown take those minutes for us, and so I'm going to have her give those motions to the board.
So, the motions are going to be a little bit different than what you have in front of you because you made edits to the second two. So I move to approve the job description for Head Social Worker with an edit to the, make a master's degree in social work required.
I don't know if anybody in the original, it was not a master's degree, and there was considerable conversation in our committee meeting, and we felt that it was best. Does anybody want to, any questions, comments, concerns?
Going to second it first? A second?
Oh, I thought we did. I'm sorry. I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Wake her up.
Ms. Seem, so Ms. Brown made the motion, Ms. Seem seconded.
Okay. Okay, great. I'm losing track of my committee here.
When, I have, I have a question. When we do follow-up social work, is there a case management, is there a case management element to the social work that we provide to the students that we're able to bill Medicaid for?
Repeat that again.
If we're providing, it's just if we're providing casework to students and we're billing Medicaid, it has to be a licensed clinical social worker, not just an MSW. So if you're getting any Medicaid funding for that, they do need to have the proper qualifications in order to bill out.
Yes, we, we work with the company MSP, and they know all the detailed rules, so.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that when we looked at the job description for the school social workers themselves, they are required to have a master's degree in social work. So I was, I was not in favor of having the person who was supervising them have a lesser degree or less experience. So this seemed like a, a good way to go.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, whenever you're ready, Ms. Gilio.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
9-0.
And we have another motion. We move to accept the administration's proposal for summer hiring as amended, but let me give you the amendments. So the amendments were to edit the end date to our meeting on August 22nd, when we will be updated with the hires that made for the summer. And we're going to include the verbiage, and I actually think, I might have to have Ms. Gilio look at the book, for, approve hiring for the teacher, or positions that fall under the teacher's contract. That's what it is. It's, yes, approve. So we're changing it to all positions because we wanted to make sure if there are any administrative positions or, or, I'm sorry, yes, from, or executive level positions that we were going, that was going to definitely come up for the board.
That's correct.
Is that clear for everyone?
Can you repeat it?
And it gives also, she made it, we made it earlier so that Dr. Andre, if he wants, if he has an emergency or something, he can certainly come to us and, come to you and request, request a change of date.
So our first edit, so Reagan had asked, to clarify again, we're changing the date where it says personnel between August 20, July 1st to August 26th. We're changing that date to August 22nd because we have a board meeting that day. And the other one was, it was request that the National Board of Education allow the superintendent to hire personnel, positions that fall under the teacher's contract.
Okay.
So, to kind of avoid the executive.
Okay, thank you.
Members.
Do we have a second?
And I think I need a second.
Can I ask a question?
We need a second first.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
The positions that come to us, are there any other than the administrator, administrator level, like assistant principals and above, other than teachers that would come before the board? We don't usually approve anything on any of the other contracts, correct? We're not?
They're nodding.
Trying to look at my, okay, great. Thank you.
So how, how different is their motion to what is being presented in the memo except for August 26th to August 27th?
We took, we took out the administrators because we felt we wanted them to come before the board and have the board vote on them. So they will still come in the same manner they were coming before, but the teachers will not. And that was, and I'm sure Mrs. Carey may want to share, but, but because of the urgency of timing right now, we are losing people because, because it's not being brought forward fast enough, and they get another offer and they take it. So it's just too late. So, but maybe Mrs. Carey would like to add something?
I think you covered it all.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just the carve-out for any positions that are covered under the teachers' collective bargaining agreement.
Mm-hmm. And when we come back for administr, for administrative, not administrative, the executive level jobs, how much notice do we need to be given to collect a quorum for you?
Right now, I think it was, we would go back to what it was. I believe it was every 14 days or whatever it was this past year.
So they're going on our regular meeting schedule?
Yeah.
But we only have one meeting in July?
In July.
And one meeting in August.
We don't have two in August.
Historically, we've always added one to three additional special meetings in July and August.
They're trying to.
Specifically for approving HR matters.
Right, I think they're trying to avoid doing that because it's, it's such a hectic time for scheduling. Ms. Brown?
It would be nice not to do that, but.
So we did, actually, that was one of, Ms. Gilio was very passionate about how important this, this hiring and employing people is, is, which we love that. And she actually said that she will make herself available Mondays?
Every week.
Weekly, if need be, but hopefully, fingers crossed, we won't need to hire an administrator.
And I would like, and I'm not a quorum.
I would like to put in a little plug to, I think she would make a great chair for HR.
I was gonna, I was gonna end with what recommendations you were gonna make for your positions, and then we'll have to, we'll have to vote on the change of the committees.
No, I think Sharon would be one. She was, she, she was always sitting in for me, and so that would, but you're probably going to have to add a member, and I would assume that Mrs. Brown would become a voting member maybe because she's also been very faithful and very timely on, she, whenever I ask, they both were just always willing. And it's hard when you have life, and you're trying to, trying to raise a family and work a job and do all the other things. Sometimes it's a little inconvenient, but they were wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, on the vote, are we ready? Any more questions? No. Okay, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And so the motion carries 9-0, but I believe we missed one motion from our meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
The first one.
We were supposed to start with the recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations.
That was me.
But that's okay. Then we went, went to Mr. Massey first.
Yes.
So if we could just, if we could just go back and then.
I make a motion that we, that we approve the personnel recommendations dated today's date, I believe.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, dated June 27, 2022.
I'll second.
And that was one of the points that we had made in this other discussion, the, the teachers are the bulk. I mean, I was, Mrs. Carey was sharing with us some of the stats, and we, we're losing more than we're, even though we're hiring, 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 if you look, but we lose as many as we hire, so we're not gaining ground. So it's very important. Very important that we get these positions filled.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Claff, Mr. Claffey?
Yes, it's okay.
Sorry, the thorn amongst the roses. Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now into unfinished business, well liaison reports. Did you want to speak to our JSSBC?
I do, actually, yes. Okay, at the JSSBC meeting last Thursday night, which was June 23rd, we had a report from the architects from Harriman who said the new middle school construction's going well. Pennachuck Middle School, they're monitoring the progress, and they made a design change for the resource room based on teacher input, which made a lot of sense. Fairgrounds Middle School, they're just finishing up the last few things. And Franklin, they've been doing more submittals on future work, and there's been discussion ongoing about the stairs situation. And then we received a report from Harvey about the construction. Pennachuck Middle School, the fall, the full construction site is, the whole site is a full construction site for the summer, so you can't just go bopping over there and looking at things, okay? There would be no public access. The Learning Commons is ahead of schedule. It's supposed to be finished in December. Science furniture's being installed. Exterior improvements will be made in late August, or mid to late August. And the new middle school, 18 acres have been cleared. There will be blasting of ledge on July 5th. The butters have been notified. And they have an upcoming meeting with the Conservation Commission about planting and landscaping.
Going to unfinished, we have no unfinished business. New business, the general assurances notification. You guys speak to that?
Yes. This is a document that's required to be signed by superintendent and his, or his designee, which happens to be me, and the president of the board. Basically, it's a document we have to sign if we're going to take any federal funding, which most all our grants are federal funding. You more than happy to review this document. It'll put you to sleep on page three, guaranteed. But basically, right now, it's just Jen would sign and I would sign, and you're just guaranteeing that you've been notified of this document, and you've seen this document. You don't have to read the whole thing. You don't have to, feel free to, as I said, but we just, we need to get this signed into the state by the 30th.
Okay. I can do that. Do you have it with you tonight?
If she could make a motion to.
Wait, can I, can I speak to that? Because I believe that the law says that we have to not only read it, we have to actually take a roll call, and Ms. Bishop cannot sign the general assurance document until she has minutes from a meeting that says that we have all read the documents and have acknowledged that we have it. And then she can sign it, and then we send both the minutes and the document up to the state. Because I remember there was a problem with it about three years ago, and then the requirements at the state level changed to make sure that everybody was doing it right.
That, that was true three years ago, but they have changed that because if you remember back about three or four years ago, a couple people wouldn't sign it, which then held up the payments of our grant funding.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it says in bold, "No payment for project grants will be made without a fully executed copy of this agreement." But they changed the language, as I said, so that it would be, it says, "I certify, as evidenced by the minutes of the school board meeting held on," had to be tonight's date, "that I have informed the members of the school board of the federal funds the district SAU will be receiving and these general assurances for the district's SAU participation." So they changed the language to be more, we're just telling, we're informing you, if two or three of you didn't want to agree with it, we weren't going to hold up the whole process. So they, they changed that wording.
Okay, fantastic. And is that grant funding in our budget book?
Yes, we listed a number of, in the back of the budget book.
Section 13 or whatever it is.
Yeah, the, the significant grants are all listed in there.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Johnson.
If you have it with you tonight, I can sign it if you want.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so you guys have been notified. I think under new business, we do have to address Ms. Seem going and then reconfiguring the HR Committee, at least in case we have special meetings. I can make a motion tonight to reconfigure it so that Ms. Gilio is the chair. I feel like, sorry, Ms. Seem?
No.
Oh, sorry. So I can make a motion to make Ms. Gilio the chair, put Ms. Brown on as a full member. Heather offered up to also join if we need her. Christina, you're typically late to that meeting. Would it be easier for you not to be on a 5:30 committee because it's a very short?
Definitely. It doesn't get to me until 5:00, and I hit traffic every single time.
Yeah.
So.
I know. I'm exit 5, I leave, or exit 4, I leave at 5:00 to make it here. Heather, are you still okay joining as the third member of the HR Committee?
Sure, that's no problem.
Okay. So I'd like to move that, Ms. Brown?
Just before you make the motion, Heather serves on four committees, plus the JSSBC, plus she's the clerk. I feel like we're putting a lot on her. Is there anyone else in the committee that maybe would like to split the burden of this since we come, the HR meetings are right before the meetings? It's not, it's not hard to get here.
HR is fun.
It is. It's quick, it's easy, it's right before. Okay.
Yeah, I just, man, I just worry about potential.
Actually, probably, probably Mr. Claffey's the probably the one person that shouldn't be on the HR committee.
You know, just like tonight, I personally know some of the people whose names appeared. I just don't know if I can...
So Ms. Lamphier or Ms. Johnson, do you have any interest? No? Ms. Lamphier?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. Heather, are you okay with Ms. Lamphier?
Yeah, I don't really have a preference at all. At this time, I'm only on JSSBC and policy, so whatever makes the sense for the most people on the board, I am 100% fine with helping out in whatever way I am useful. So if Ms. Lamphier has the time and the ability, that's fine with me.
Okay.
So that gives us three members, myself, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Lamphier, but we still need an alternate, right?
Heather can be the alternate.
Yeah, and this is the committee that does all of the executive-level interviews. So whoever does it needs to be available during the day sometimes to cover interviews.
That actually lets me out because I just changed my hours at work for a temporary, I'm not sure how long it's gonna be, but for the next couple of weeks anyway, I'm not gonna be getting out of work until 2:30, and I work in Boston. I am free on Mondays, but the rest of the weeks, the rest of the week, I can't guarantee that I'll be around.
Well, for the record, in, I don't know if I, it's been my third year as being the alternate for the HR committee. I've sat on one executive interview, like, or principal, assistant principal interview. It's not quite as daunting as it sounds.
Well, Ms. Gilio's been on quite a few.
I do a lot of interviews. It's kind of become my new specialty.
I think she's done like four or five in the last two weeks.
And I have to say, when I had to reach out beyond the committee, there was always people who, I'm just, I have to say, I don't think I ever asked anybody that they didn't try to accommodate me. So I have to say that for the most part, the board is, you know, they're pretty, they try, I think most of us try to do what we can when we can.
And being retired, I'm very available, so, I mean, I don't think we should have a problem. You probably wouldn't need to do it for a long time if at all.
It's interesting, because of all the committees I served on in my 14 years, I enjoyed HR the most. I absolutely did. It was wonderful to, Mr. Claffey has the advantage of knowing a lot of these people. I knew no one. So for me, it was wonderful to get to meet them, and not only meet them, but hear who they were, have them share. Like tonight, I thought you saw a little bit of this man's heart, because he spoke of the kids and the sports and how he enjoyed so much watching them grow up, that he remembered when he had started with them, pretty much, and worked their way up. So it's a great committee. Anybody that could do it, I would encourage you, because I think you'd enjoy it.
We just need a second for your motion.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. So the motion on the table is, I move to reconfigure the HR committee to consist of Ms. Gilio as chair, Ms. Brown, Ms. Lamphier, and Ms. Raymond as the alternate.
Ms. Lamphier's the alternate, not Heather. Did we change that?
No, Heather's gonna be the alternate because they were saying that the, during the day, meetings when we have to reach out, people are quite accessible.
Okay, so, okay, great, thank you. And who seconded it? Oh, Ms. Seem did, yes.
Yep, Ms. Seem did. Sorry, Mr. Claffey.
I just, I'm easily confused. Thank you. Oh. Roll call vote? Okay. So Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that. We are now on to second public comments, and I believe it's Mr. Guthro again?
Yes. Matthew Guthro, 104 Fondland. Before I get started, I wanted to thank Ms. Darling for her candid comments. Many of us were also under the impression that the naming was driven by the chair of the JSSBC, regardless of public input. So we appreciate you shedding some light on that meeting that we still don't have the minutes for. I wanted to talk to you today about my concerns for safety in our Nashua public schools. My concern is the fact that we have only two dedicated school resource officers here in our city. I learned this from my participation in the Nashua Citizens Academy, held by the mayor's office this past year. In light of recent national events involving school safety and reviewing the documents of last week's budget hearing, it doesn't appear that any additional resources will be dedicated to a stronger police presence within our public schools. Since this will be a future budgeted item, I'm asking that in the future, consideration can be made to the alarming fact that we only have two dedicated police officers covering 18 public schools here in Nashua. I've seen more police officers detailed at school board meetings than you guys have dedicated to covering your schools on a daily basis. I understand, I discussed this with the chief police chief today, and I understand that the command staff will continue to adjust their zone coverages to overlap these areas to include all of the schools. My fear is that we're letting city politics and local bureaucracy take over what should be common sense decision-making. Protecting our most vulnerable population should be a priority of this board. At the end of the day, this board should be asking for more police presence in our schools. Maybe we could use the tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars that was used for an executive search of our superintendent candidate that didn't have the qualifications to hold that position here in Nashua, and use that money to bolster our police presence here in our public schools. Please don't let this opportunity slip away without future study. I thank you for your consideration and your continued commitment to the well-being of education and safety of our students and staff here in Nashua. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other people are signed up for second public comment? Do we have any board member comments? Ms. Darling? I'll just go around the horseshoe. No comment. Mr. Claffey?
Sorry. I just want the public to know, us to recognize Mr. James Guy, social studies teacher at Nashua South, who was recently named Coach of the Year by the Baseball Coaches Association of New Hampshire.
That's fantastic. Ms. Gilio?
I would like to thank Ms. Seem for all of her years of dedication and for keeping me calm at some meetings when I was gonna fly off the handle and no one knew it, except Ms. Seem. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
We're gonna miss you, Ms. Seem. And I am so glad I was here to see you at your last meeting. You are on fire.
Ms. Brown?
I'm actually a little bit choked up. I really enjoyed getting to know you as a person. I respect you as a board member. As a Christian, I just, I really adore you, so I'm gonna miss you.
I want to say to this gentleman that the two resource, I hear you, your concerns are real. They were my concerns and have been my concerns for quite a while. They are paid for, those two positions are paid for, out of my understanding, out of the National Police Department's funds. So it's budgeted by them, and I'm, because they are, basically, they're police, they work for the police. And so it comes out of their budget. And so if I'm not mistaken, in order to have more resource officers, we would have to, that would, it's about money. And it seems like everything gets down to money. And if you decide to run for school board, you can work on that budget, because there's always a need. But I have to tell you, I wish we had more parents who got involved and studied it and knew. I was impressed that you knew and had done what you have done, because unfortunately, our parents don't get as involved, and maybe it's because they're overloaded, I'm not, but sometimes committing yourself and going the extra step to be part of the community as well as your family, takes a little more time and a little more effort, but it's worthy, and so I appreciate your effort. And all of this, you all, but I have to say to you, it was an honor to serve on this board, and I'm sorry that I don't have the stamina to keep, to keep, to keep running. But I will watch you from afar, and if I can give you, if I can give you a little push, I will, I promise. And I want the public to know, truly, it was an honor. I don't know if I could ever say that I made any huge changes, but there were small changes along the way. If you can help even one student, these teachers are able to help many, many. We don't see that the way they do. The best, if you can, if you can even say one time, and there are a couple of times when I can remember that I actually helped an individual student, those were the, those were the biggest blessings of the whole thing. As far as the policies and things, I'm not sure I made any impact ever, so, but anyway, I wish you all Godspeed, and I will, my prayers. Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, before I thank Ms. Seem, I would like to thank a wonderful HR director who I'm going to miss, because every time she came with a policy, I always trusted everything that she gave us, and, you know, she was excellent, and we're gonna miss you. You did a great job, so I just want to let you know that. As for Ms. Seem, I knew her before I got on the board, and I remember when she ran and she won, and she called me up and she said, "What do I do? Can you come help me and give me some information?" And I ran down to her real estate office, and we sat, and I gave her some advice. And, you know, it was a pleasure working with you, and I'm sure I'll see another contract maybe here or there.
Oh, that would be nice.
That would be nice. Like Sue Newman talked about, you know, negotiations, you know, and, you know, you gotta give and you gotta take a little bit. And that's how we all come to a kind of a consensus here on the board. It's all about that give and take. But may your health be okay.
Thank you.
And now we can go out to lunch, because we won't be a quorum, you know?
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I just, like everyone has said, I'm gonna miss Ms. Seem so much, and I'm so sorry that I'm contagious and not able to be there tonight. Ms. Seem has done a wonderful job of continuing to be a role model for continuing to learn, you know, having that lifelong learning, and also to being able to disagree with people in a respectful way that allows us to continue to work together. And she and I have had conversations about this dozens and dozens of times when we've disagreed on things, so that's been, that's been lovely. Regarding the school safety officers, again, Ms. Seem is absolutely correct, it's a, it's a police line item. They do have officers in all the schools on their regular routes, but we don't have a school police force. We do have security guards at the high schools. And in order for us to have additional school resource officers, the police need to be able to hire additional police officers. And for the last, oh, at least 18 months, if not two years, there haven't been a ton and ton of applicants to be police officers, for probably COVID-related, as is everything else. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody that it is the summertime, but we still have free lunches and breakfasts available to the children of Nashua. We, the school district partners with a number of local agencies. And at Amherst Street, Dr. Christ, Fairgrounds Elementary, Led Street, and Mount Pleasant, every day from 8:30 to 9:30, and 11:30 to 12:30, Monday through Friday, kids can get a free breakfast and a free lunch just by showing up at one of those five schools. And if anyone's interested in volunteering for the program to hand out those breakfasts and lunches, the coordination of the volunteers is through the United YAs website. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Seem for her service. I will just be repeating what everyone else has been saying, but it's been a pleasure. I think how you, again, kind of what Heather said, how you disagree and how you share your opinion always is positive. It always highlights a solution rather than just focusing on a problem, and I appreciate that kind of participation in our board meetings. And I also want to say thank you to Ms. Carey. That was quite a bummer to hear that you were going to be moving on, but we have truly enjoyed having you work with us. It's been nice, and of course, Mr. Donovan stuck with us. He must have dropped the short straw.
Yeah, there it is.
But we so appreciate all of the things that you guys have been doing at Central Office. I know that it's been a lot of transitions, and it's the end of the school year, and June and July are some of the busiest months that you guys have to shoulder the work of, work for, work, whatever. But we appreciate all that you do, and hopefully we get somebody even better, maybe? Doubtful. But we'll see what happens next. But thank you all for participating with us. And with that, I, do we need to go into a non-public for anything?
Do we need to what?
Non-public.
Oh, no. Not me. I'm very public tonight.
So Ms. Darling makes a motion to adjourn, and Ms. Johnson seconds.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Darling.
Oh, you got to do it, because I was busy with this. Okay, and you seconded, of course, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I was nominated as clerk the first time, because it keeps you from talking. I think that was a very calculated move.
I think the peanut gallery agrees.
Yeah, you need to vote.
I have to call a roll still?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes, please.
Mr. Claffey?
Ah, yes.
You'd really rather hang out longer, I know. Ms. Gilio, yes. Ms. Lamphier? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond. I didn't see you sitting there.
Well, I mean, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
So, yes, we all agree that we should adjourn.
I also vote.
Oh, yeah, I knew I was missing somebody. I just couldn't figure out who it was. See, this is not a permanent role for me. You can see that writing on the wall.
We are now adjourned at 9:02.